Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, December 2nd, meeting of the Fresno Planning Commission. Can we please take roll call?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Commissioner Hardy?
Present, thank you.
Commissioner Criner? Commissioner Sodilyne? I see her logged on. We'll come back to her. Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Vane? Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Chair Bray?
Here.
And circling back to Commissioner Sodilyne, you're here?
Present.
And Commissioner Criner?
Present.
Okay.
I didn't hear. Is Commissioner, excuse me, McKenzie here?
No, no McKenzie, no Vane.
Okay, okay, so we'll now begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States
of America and to the Republic
which stands
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll read the procedures. While emergency order number 2020-12 is in effect, the City of Fresno public meetings will be conducted electronically and telephonically only. As such, this meeting is being conducted electronically and telephonically. The public may participate in tonight's meeting by using the Zoom link or calling the phone number provided on the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that all participants will be on mute until they're called upon by the chair, at which point they will be unmuted. If you are a member of the public and would like to comment on an item, please use the raise hand function on Zoom, or if you're calling in, dial star nine. To avoid confusion, please wait for the item you desire to comment on to be called on by the chair before electronically raising your hand or dialing star nine. For each matter considered by the Commission, there will be first a staff presentation, followed by a presentation from the project applicant. Testimony from supporters of the project will then be taken, followed by testimony from those in opposition. The applicant will have the right to a final rebuttal prior to closing the public hearing. In accordance with Section 13 of Article 2 of the Planning Commission Rules and Regulations governing the length of public debate, all public testimony for those in support and in opposition will be limited to the three minutes per person. Any testimony that references race, religion, ethnicity, economic status, national origin, or any other classification protected under state or federal law in a derogatory manner shall be deemed irrelevant and will not be considered by the Commission in making its lands use determinations. If you challenge these land use matters in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in oral or written testimony or before the close of the hearing. So we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes from staff, Chair Bray.
Okay, do any commissioners have changes?
No changes.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Criner?
Yes.
Commissioner Sodilyne? Commissioner McKenzie?
Here.
We're voting on agenda approval.
I'll abstain since I, yeah.
Commissioner Vane? Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Bray?
Yes, and please note that Commissioner McKenzie is here now. So we'll move to the consent calendar. First, we have minutes from our meeting on October 7th. Can we have a motion to approve those if no one has any comments on them?
Moved.
Okay, can we have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Who made the second to the motion?
That was Commissioner Hardy, I believe.
Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Criner?
Yes.
Commissioner Sodilyne? Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Vane? Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Bray?
Yes. Okay, and we do have the consent calendar here. We have the one item, an entitlement. Is anyone from the public here to comment about that entitlement? Okay. Pardon?
I can't see any hands up at this time.
Thank you. So can we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Motion to approve. We have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Criner?
Yes.
Commissioner Sodilyne?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Vane? Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Bray?
Yes. Okay, do we have any reports by commissioners? Okay, so we will move on to continued matters. A ID 20-001639 was consideration of a plan amendment and a rezone application. We have the staff presentation, please.
All right, good evening, Chair Bray Commissioners. Chris Lang from the Planning and Development Department. Let me get this set up. All right, so for your consideration this evening is Plan Amendment Application and Rezone Application P1900417, vesting ten of trap map 6212, ten of track map 6276, and the Environmental Impact Report, SCH 2020039061. All right, the subject property is located on the west side of North Grantland Avenue between West Ashland and West Gaysburg Avenue alignments, and it comprises about 160 acres of property. Here's an aerial view of the property. You can see to the north is a residential neighborhood. To the east is Central Unified School District complex, and then surrounding everything else is agricultural use. Just to compare for your background, here is the, this is the previous Westlake Project, which was previously approved for the subject site. As you can see, it stretches from West Shields Avenue all the way to the West Gettysburg alignment. This was again approved back in 2013. Our plans for this have changed. Now the applicant is proposing a new application, which you are reviewing now. Here's the existing planned land use. You can see it's medium density residential as well as community commercial on the southeast corner of the property at what Ashland and Grantland intersection. And the plan amendment proposes to reclassify this approximately 11 acre community commercial property to the medium density residential planned land use. Then the plan amendment also proposes to modify MT1, which is the circulation plan from the general plan. And you can see that by the yellow line, that identifies a proposed collector street, which would be reflected again on MT1. And then the green line is the proposal to modify the existing trail layout. There was a previous trail layout with the Westlake Project. However, with that going away, it still shows up on the circulation or the trail element in the general plan. So this would be modifying that to update the general plan to what is shown here. And as you can see, the trail does lead to approximately a two acre park to the southwest of track 6212. The property or the project proposes to rezone the community commercial portion of property on the southeast corner of the subject property from, again, community commercial to single family residential. So going from CC UGM and CZ to RS5 UGM and CC, CZ. Also, the entire 160 acre property is proposing to remove the existing conditions of zoning, which were applied under the Westlake Project, and replace them with new updated conditions of zoning, which are specific to this proposal. The conditions of zoning from the previous Westlake Project or the Westlake Development related to the requirement of public improvements, such as construction of traffic signals and widening of roadway segments based upon, you know, how many units were built in different phases. Previously, the Westlake Project proposed 2,600 units, and so now it's going down to 844 proposed units. Now, these conditions of zoning did not appropriately correspond to the new project. And so the new conditions of zoning being proposed are to be consistent with public works, conditions, and mitigation measures. And these conditions include the installation of traffic signals following intersections of Grantland and the proposed Indianapolis slash Loop Road alignment prior to construction of 100 homes. Grantland Avenue and Ashland Avenue is prior to the, prior to 200 homes. Grantland and Gettysburg prior to 450 homes, and then Grantland and Shields prior to 650 homes. This is map 6212, which proposes to subdivide the 14.41 acre property or portion of property into an 84 lot, single family residential subdivision. The overall density is going to be 5.8 dwellings per acre, which meets the medium density residential requirements between 512 dwellings per acre. As you can see, the cul-de-sacs to the west of the property have outlaws, which would lead to the proposed trail and well, as well as Outlet A, which is identified in the center, which would lead to the trail or proposed trail along Grantland for connectivity purposes. Here is track 6276, which this proposes to subdivide 17 or 14.17 acres of property into an 83 lot subdivision with an overall density of 5.9 dwellings per acre. Again, as you can see, this is on the north side of the proposed Loop Road, and 6212 is on the south side with Grantland to the east. Also, if you look to the right of the map, you can see that there is a temporary access road, which is proposed with the existing Grantland alignment. New local streets and lots would go over where the existing Grantland line is. And so a temporary access road would be constructed to connect from the north to the Loop Road, which once Veterans Boulevard ultimately is constructed, that access road would go away essentially. An environmental impact report was prepared for the project. It was determined by the city that one would be required. Notice of preparation was circulated on March 20th of this year, and a scoping meeting was held on June 29th. One member of the public was in attendance. The draft EIR was published on June 30th with a 45 day comment period, and four comment layers were received and incorporated into the final EIR. The EIR determined that of the impacts analyzed air quality, energy, and greenhouse gases and climate change were less than significant, and hydrology and water quality, noise, public services, transportation, traffic, and utilities and service systems were less than significant with mitigation. It was determined that agriculture and forestry resources was a significant and unavoidable impact. The project would result in the loss of over 160 acres of farmland, which has been deemed of statewide importance or unique farmland. That occupies the proposed site. With the previous EIR's statement of overriding considerations was done for the Fresno MEIR. And another statement of overriding considerations will be prepared for this one as well. Whenever an EIR is certified, that does identify a simple and avoidable impact such as this, it is required to move forward with certification. Scoping meeting again was held on June 29th. It also served as a neighborhood meeting. Due to COVID restrictions, all meetings were held online. One member of the public was present, however, didn't have any comments on the project. The Council One District or the District One Council Project Review Committee met and recommended approved project with a vote of four to zero. And as you previously received a supplement to the staff report, it was a comparison table of the previous Westlake Project and the proposed Park West Project. And that was major discussion at the District One Committee as to what was previously approved and as to what is approved or conditioned for this project. Notices of the Plan Commission hearing were mailed to property owners and within 1,000 feet. And last year, vesting ten of track map initially was noticed to go to Plan Commission by itself, however, ultimately tied in with this project. And at that time, we had received two layers in opposition received, and those were also included with this project and included in your staff report. Staff recommends to recommend certification to the State Council of the final EIR for the overall 844 lot, single family residential subdivision, as well as recommended adoption of the findings of fact, recommending approval of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adoption of the statement of overriding considerations, and adoption of the water supply assessment. Staff also recommends approval to the State Council of Plan Amendment P19417, which proposes to amend the general plan land use from community commercial to medium density residential for that 11 acre portion of property. And then also to modify and update the MT1 and MT2 exhibits in the general plan. Staff recommends approval of reasonable application, which proposes to amend the 11 acre portion of property from the CC UGM CZ Zone District to the RS5 UGM CZ Zone District with the conditions of zoning being those required by the Public Works Department. Staff recommends approval of vesting ten of track map 6212 for the 84 lot subdivision, as well as vesting ten of track map 6276 for the 83 lot subdivision. That concludes staff's presentation, and if you have any questions, staff is available to answer any questions.
Do any commissioners have questions at this time? Okay, is the applicant here to make a presentation?
Gavin, the applicant for this one is Jeff Roberts. If you could allow him to speak.
Gotcha. Thanks. Hello, just, can you hear me at all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, this is Jeff Roberts. I work for the ACME Group, and our business address is 1396 West Turnin Avenue in the City of Fresno, Suite Number 110. I appreciate seeing you all here this evening. Hope everybody is healthy and had a nice Thanksgiving. And I'll be very brief in my comments here to the Commission regarding this application. I'm happy to report and pleased to report that we concur 100% with the staff recommendation on all elements that were outlined by Mr. Vane, including the final EIR certification, the plan amendment, the rezone, and then both track maps. We appreciate the work that staff's put into this. It's been a very, I'll say, a joint effort on the staff's part and our part for the last many months. And we're very happy to be here and headed toward the City Council meeting later this month. This, as staff has outlined, and I won't reiterate too much of that. We have about 160 acres of land, a total of 844 units with an incorporated park and trail system. There are two track maps, which comprise the first phase of the project. The project was supported unanimously last night by the District One Implementation Committee. And quite, what's interesting, this property's been in the sphere of influence of the city for 36 years, since 1984. And it's had some kind of urban land use designation since that time. Some of you will recall, it was planned for, a portion of this was a larger project. It was annexed to the city about six years ago. And at full buildout, this project will constitute, as I said, 844 units. It's 100% consistent with the West Area specific plan that your body considered and the City Council initiated last year. It hasn't gone through hearing yet due to the COVID situation, but this project is 100% consistent with that plan that was initiated. This site is one of those that was listed in your housing element as a sites, as a site and part of your housing inventory. Because it's recently been brought into the city, it wasn't on a previous or an earlier housing element sites inventory, but it is now. And it's part of the effort that the city has to achieve, especially with the new emphasis on the housing, is to make progress and show progress to the state that they're chipping away at some of this inventory and actually building housing. Well, this project is ready, willing, and able to go forward. We're anxious for your support, and we would have happy, we're happy to answer any questions if you have them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Do any commissioners have questions for Jeff? Okay, so we'll go out to the public now. Is there anyone from the public here in support of the project?
Yes, we have Victor Gonzalez with his hand up. I'm allowing you to talk, Victor. You need to unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, and good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. My name is Victor Gonzalez, and I'm a resident of District Two, west of 99. I am here this evening in support of this project. As a real estate broker, I've personally conducted about 300 transactions west of 99, and I can share that there are a large number of families that have invested in Northwest Fresno for various reasons. The pattern I've often witnessed is families purchasing their first home and looking for their move-up home once their family is established, oftentimes after their first or second baby. I'm excited for this development because it builds up Northwest Fresno, and especially the area west of 99. It allows for people to make a long-term investment in this part of town and in the school district. Without this type of growth, it leaves those aforementioned young families to potentially move to Clovis or Madera County to developments such as Riverstone or Tassero Viejo. This project, coupled with Veterans Boulevard, makes for exciting growth in Northwest Fresno and for Central Unified, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is anyone else in favor of the project?
We have Rebecca. Rebecca, I'm allowing you to talk. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I also am a resident of west of the 99. I'm at 6515 West Morris Avenue. I have been looking forward to them building more out here for so long. Just because I know the more development, even residential development they do, that more retail and commercial and other things that we don't have west of the 99 that we would like. So as more development comes along, I'm super excited because I hate that I have to go east of the 99 every time I want to go buy something. And I love living on the west side. I would never move out of here. Consider upgrading and moving to this new community too, so I'm excited on all fronts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of the project?
Yeah, I've got Ashley. Ashley, I'm going to allow you to speak. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm Ashley Pre. I'm also a resident. I live at 6824 West Calamurna. And I've lived in Northwest Fresno for approximately 10 years now, and I love the area. I've seen this project. I think it's great. I have family. I have friends that want to move to this side of town as well. So I welcome this project to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else in support?
Yeah, we've got Gabriel. Gabriel, I've go ahead and allow you to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, how you? Hello, good evening. This is Gabriel Ortiz. Hey, I live in 7356 West San Ramon. Lived over here in Northwest Fresno for eight years now, and totally looking forward to this Grandville development because my wife and I are looking for our move-up home as well. So definitely love the stuff that Grandville does in this area. We ride our bicycles in their homes all the time. And I'm definitely looking forward to Veterans Boulevard connecting to it, so it'd be a great thing for our family. And we also have family who want to move to this area. They're just waiting for Grandma to build some more homes here.
Thank you. Anyone else in support?
There are no hands up right now, Commissioner Bray.
Do we have anyone from the public in opposition?
I see no hands up.
Okay, so no one in the position?
Hold on, I've got, I've got one person who just put their hand up. Hold on.
Thank you.
Elisa, I'm going to allow you to talk. Please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners. Elisa Beleos, 5323 North Tisha Avenue, Fresno, California, 93723, and Forgotten Fresno Board Member. I do have some concerns about this development. On page 47 of exhibit N6, it's mentioned that the project site is located in an area currently served by the Police Department. I kind of found that to be fictitious as there's nothing there. More housing is going to mean more constraints on our emergency services. And currently, it is my belief that emergency services is not able to change light signals on Shaw Avenue to get out to our neighborhoods. I'm curious about the trail. Will it have benches or tables available to residents? Page 56 of exhibit N6 talks about an additional westbound lane west of Polk. But what about the Highway 99 overpass to Polk on Shaw? The bottlenecking needs to be addressed. Veterans is not going to fix somebody in this tract wanting to get some cheap gas at Costco. I'm curious about when the traffic study was conducted, if it was done during COVID conditions? Because the schools are closed, our traffic levels right now are extremely unrealistic. Nearly two years ago, we were here about a rezone for an apartment complex, and Commissioner Bray asked if development should have stopped with the developments that I live in, which is Lenar Tract, and other members of our organization live in, and the answer is yes. We were naive and sold on Veterans Boulevard, which we are still waiting to be completed. Even with veterans, our traffic woes will still exist. Shaw and Highway ninety-nine are a prime example. How many developments must be approved to do something about that horrid intersection? It baffles me that there is still zero mitigation, even though thousands of homes have been approved out here on the west side in District One. Also, with regards to if there are parks and trails, I'm hoping that the facilities districts that we're in, the landscaping can be done right the first time. A lot of times, they're fixing one, two, three, four times, so if we can be a little bit more cost-effective with our tax dollars. And I'm concerned about the continuity of Grantland from one lane to two lane, to one lane to two lane, as we're between city and county jurisdictions out here. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. So is there anyone else in opposition?
There are no hands up right now.
Okay, then we'll take it back to commissioners. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a follow-up. I'm wondering, because there was a lot of information in the, in the, in attachments. I'm wondering if the, I think it's a response to comments for Caltrans, if, if that might address some of the comments that just came from the, I think it was Elisa, and, or if staff wanted to point out maybe some items related to the traffic study that might address some of those comments that, that she brought up.
Chris, can you address that, or do we have someone from Public Works?
I believe we have several from Public Works, Jill Gormley and Andrew Benelli, then also, I believe Travis Crawford, who is the secret consultant. He might be able to address questions regarding the response to comments. I'm not sure if anyone wants to take a shot at that.
I, I
Chris, who?
Sorry, Gavin.
Who am I supposed to be looking for, Chris?
Oh, Travis Crawford.
Okay, I've given Travis the ability to unmute himself, and sorry, Jill, if it's up on you there.
No, that's okay. Good evening, Jill Gormley, Traffic Operations and Planning Manager with the Public Works Department. To address a couple of the comments that were just made, we have, we are actively working right now with Caltrans on feasibility study for the Shaw and State Route ninety-nine avenue interchange. We are starting to wrap up different options on how we can improve that to, to make traffic flow better from one side of the freeway to the next. We do realize that that is an issue. It has been an issue for a while, and it's, you know, something that we are actively working on. There also were some mitigations for the project identified in the EIR. They're based on the number of rooftops built. They include installing traffic signals along Grantland at the Loop Road, which is also the Indianapolis alignment, a traffic signal at Ashland and Grantland. There is one at Shields in Grantland, constructing a segment of, of Veterans Boulevard, and also at the Gettysburg intersection. We did do, the, excuse me, the study was done pre-COVID, so the traffic counts do reflect, you know, more what we consider a normal traffic, not when school was not in session, and, you know, so they are not reduced by, by any, any amounts because of the pandemic.
So, Elisa or anyone else who has concerns about the interchange in Veterans Boulevard, you could reach out to Jill and maybe she could clarify that for you more in detail at another time. So, do any other commissioners have questions or comments? Okay, so we'll go to a vote. Chris, I'd like to thank you for your work on this. It looks like you got a lot of people there, so we appreciate your help with it. Can we have a roll call vote or motion, please, to deal with this?
I'd like to make a motion. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend staff's presentation of item number ID two-zero-zero-zero-one-six-three-nine. All, all six, all six recommendations.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Sodi Lane, seconded by Commissioner Diaz. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Criner?
Yes.
Commissioner Sodi Lane? Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vang? Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Bray?
Yes. Okay, so now we'll move on to new banners. ID twenty-dash-zero-zero-one-five-eight-five, consideration of conditional use permit and related environmental assessment. Can we have the staff presentation, please?
Good evening. My name is Calvin, Planner Two for the Planning Development Department. Just share my screen. Sorry, let me just do that. Share screen. Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. So, consideration of conditional use permit, application number P twenty-dash-twenty-one-seventy-one, and related environmental assessment filed by Mary Moment of Concept Design Group. Here we have the vicinity map. The subject parcel is located on approximately point-two-zero acres at, located at seven-two-eight West Vassar Avenue on the north side of West Vassar Avenue between North Tillman and North Denno Avenue. And here's the area map of the subject parcel, which is currently vacant. To the west is also another vacant property, and to the north is an existing parking lot and church, which is separated by an alley, and then to the west and south side are existing single-family homes. And here's the zoning map of the subject site and neighboring properties, which mainly consists of single-family homes and a few commercial site, which is located at the corner of Fruit and Clint Avenue, and then there's a RM-one property on the bottom right. So, conditional use permit application number P twenty-dash-twenty-one-seventy-one proposes the construction of a duplex in the RS-five zone district, which duplexes are permitted in the RS-five zone district, subject to the, subject to a conditional use permit approved by the Planning Commission, and the project must comply with the development standards as stated in the Fresno Municipal Code, Section fifteen-dash-nine-o-six, or as determined by the review authority. So the project proposes two dwelling units, each unit out approximately at one thousand two hundred twenty-six square foot of living space with three bedrooms, two baths, one car garage, a cover patio with shared courtyard and front yard. And landscaping and irrigation are proposed. So the minimum interior size setback for RM-one are, is four feet per side. The project is proposing to have five feet, ten inches high setback, and with a rear yard at those six feet. And the front yard is proposed at eighteen feet, which the minimum is ten feet, so it complies with that section of the code. But according to Section fifteen-dash-twenty-four-seventeen C of the code, a twenty-foot driveway setback is required. Therefore, the project has been conditioned to meet that requirement. And then here are the landscape plan and floor plans. And this is how the elevation of the project and how it will look like. So, neighborhood meeting and public notices. So as a requirement of the code, duplex proposed in the RS-five are required to conduct a neighborhood meeting and send out public notices. Therefore, on October twelfth, twenty-twenty, a neighborhood meeting notice was mailed to property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property, which was scheduled for October twenty-six through Zoom. And then on October twenty-six, the meeting was conducted through Zoom, and three property owners were in attendance, and they were able to talk with the applicant and the property owner, just to clarify and to answer some questions. And then on November twentieth, twenty-twenty, the notice of public hearing was mailed out to property owners within one thousand feet of the subject property. So that concludes my presentation and its staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt environmental assessment number P twenty-dash-twenty-one-seventy-one dated December twentieth, twenty-twenty, a determination that the proposed project is exempt from CECL through Section fifteen-thirty, fifteen-three-thirty-two, Class thirty-two categorical exemption, and to approve conditional use permit application number P twenty-dash-zero-twenty-one-seventy-one requesting authorization to construct a duplex in the RS-five zone district. And then if you have any questions, staff is here to answer them.
Thank you, Cal. Good job. Do any commissioners have questions for staff? Is the applicant here for a presentation?
The applicant is here. So, I'm sorry, let me just, just, I forgot to note this down, but when the neighbor notice was mailed out, staff did not receive any appeal letters, but staff did receive two phone calls from two property owners who had some concerns about the duplex going into this area. I believe they said they would join the, this hearing. I'm not sure they're in here, but then the applicant is here and does have a presentation.
Thank you.
Or would like to speak.
What's the applicant's name, Cal? Okay, Design Group has been allowed to unmute themselves?
Yes. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. Hope you and your family are safe, and actually, I'm here. If you have any question, I'm ready to answer for that.
Okay, do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, so I guess not. So we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone from the public here in support of this project?
There are no hands up at the minute, up at the moment, Commissioner Bray.
Okay. Is there any one from the public in opposition to the project?
Again, no hands are up at the moment, Commissioner Bray.
Okay, so we'll take this back to the commissioners. Do any commissioners have comments or questions on this? Can we have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to recommend that we approves staff's recommendation on all three items presented tonight.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Sodi Lane, seconded by Commissioner Criner. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hardy recused himself. Commissioner Criner?
Yes.
Commissioner Sodi Lane? Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Vang? Commissioner Diaz? And Chair Bray?
Yes. Okay, thank you again, Cal. We'll now move on to item B.
Chair Bray?
Yes.
May I just interrupt briefly? I just wanted to notify staff and any in the public who may be wondering, but the item that was approved, item seven-A, Park West, the hundred-and-sixty-acre development will not be heard by the City Council in the month of December. So, just for the record, I think somebody had mentioned that it may go in December, but it will not be on the December tenth council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll go on to item B, ID twenty-dash-zero-zero-one-six-zero-five. It's consideration of a conditional use permit, number P twenty-zero-zero-four-eight-eight, and the related environmental assessment. We have a staff presentation, please.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Philip Segres, Planning and Development. All right, can, Chair Bray, can you confirm that? You can see the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, this next item is a conditional use permit, application number P twenty-dash-zero-zero-four-eight-eight, and the related environmental finding as filed by Eric Zamora of MEC and Associates. The subject application pertains to approximately a point-three-nine acre parcel located on the east side of North College Avenue between West Minaretts and West Bruce Avenues in the Pine Dale neighborhood. Next slide is a planned land use and zoning map. According to the Fresno General Plan Land Use Map and Official Zoning Map, the property is designated for medium-density residential plan land uses, which allows for density of five to twelve units an acre. The planned land use designation of medium-density residential is consistent with the property's underlying RS-five zone district. And the proper, property is primarily surrounded by other properties planned and zoned for single-family residential uses with pockets of multifamily residential zone districts located immediately to the north of the subject property, with some further to the northwest, the south, and the southwest. In addition, the property is proximate to the Pine Dale Boys, Pine Dale Boys and Girls Club, which is located just northwest of the property off of Minaretts, and the Pine Dale Elementary and Pine Dale And the Pine Dale Elementary and Pine Dale Branch Library, which are located southeast of the pod uh property. This next slide is an aerial photograph of the site. Uh which shows that the uh subject property is currently vacant and is located on a developed block. In addition, the property is surrounded by multifamily residential apartment complex to the north. And a combination of existing single-family residences uh and vacant properties to the southeast. And across the street to the west. In addition, I know the aerial photo does not show that, but according to a uh street view, that more recent. Photo showed that were some adjacent vacant properties. Uh in addition, there is a Fresno irrigation uh district pipeline and easement that runs uh. Adjacent uh to the rear of the property uh is to be uh along the uh easily property property line. Again, uh the application requests to construct a multi-unit residential development in the RS five zone district. And the related environmental assessment recommends that a class thirty two categorical exemption be adopted for the project. It's mentioned in the staff report, uh per the development code, when a duplex or multi-unit. Uh residential use is proposed in the RS five zone district. Uh the planning commission shall approve, conditionally approve, or deny uh the application uh for a conditionally use permit. Following a public hearing, therefore, the subject application is be considered, being considered by the planning commission tonight. Uh the project uh proposes a construction of a multi-unit residential development consisting of two detached. Two-story, single-family dwelling units and one two-story duplex uh on a vacant parcel. The reddish and highlighted building footprint uh on this uh site plan represents the location of the proposed duplex unit. And the two bluish highlighted building footprints represent the location of the two proposed detached single-family units. Um based on the residential, the planned land use, density and acreage allocation, the. Subject property is expected to yield approximately one to four units, therefore, the four unit uh development. Uh is within the allowable density range of the subject property. And the, for informational purposes, the density is uh ten and a quarter dwelling units an acre. And lastly, given the conditions of approval, the project is consistent with the Fresno Municipal Code. The development code requirements, the general plan, the Bullard Community Plan, and the Pine Dale Neighborhood. Plan, which is also a component of the Bullard Community Plan. Next slide shows the elevation and floor plans for the proposed project. Um each unit will be two stories and each unit will measure approximately one thousand one hundred square feet. And useful and include a covered front porch and attached uh. Uh oh yeah, and and a back patio. Exterior facade will consist of stucco finish, wheel glaze, windows, gable vents, and composite. Uh asphalt shingle roofs. And also exhibits for the, and this is just the the elevations for the proposed uh single-family units. And the exhibits for the uh duplex are essentially the same, but they're just combined with an adjoining. Uh wall between the two. Um the exhibit was included in the staff report as uh exhibit I. On September seventeenth, the neighborhood, uh two thousand eighteen, a neighborhood meeting was held. And of course, with the development code. At the meeting, uh no individuals attended, no individuals did attend the meeting. On November ninth, twenty twenty, a district two project review committee. Uh reviewed and recommended approval of the proposed project by a vote of three to zero with no comments or additional recommendations. Uh notices for tonight's planning commission hearing were mailed out to surrounding property owners on November eighteenth, twenty twenty. Um and yesterday, uh one phone call was received in opposition of the project. Uh the primary concerns were related to two-story apartments in the Pine Dale neighborhood. In addition, just this afternoon, uh I did receive a email, uh email slash letter in opposition to the project. And that was provided to the planning commissioners uh prior to, and sent that shortly thereafter. Um and I think there were just over forty uh, over forty individuals named on that that were not signatures. I think uh the lack of signatures had to do with uh maybe uh COVID-related issues. But regardless, staff did have a limited time to review and address the concerns. However, uh in the short time, staff uh determined that the primary concern. Related to apartments and specifically two-story apartments in the Pine Dale neighborhood. Staff's initial response to the development, uh it responses that the development code. Uh does allow for multi-unit development of this type height and density and intensity on the subject property. And furthermore, there are no operative plans or design guidelines that prohibit such development. And lastly, pursuant to section fifteen one oh four B of the development code, uh which outlines priority of plans. That in the event there is a conflict between a development code and in an operative plan, development code shall control. That said, uh staff does review projects, including this one in uh. For compliance with community plans and specific plans and desired guidelines as applicable. And staff has determined that the project, that given conditions of approval, the project is consistent with the goals. And policies outlined in the Bullard Community Plan and the Pine Dale Neighborhood Plan and feels. The project is uh appropriate for this site. And the project is uh consi- uh ju- consistent with the general plan as it promotes uh investment in the neighborhood. By proposing multi-unit residential development within the city. And it preserves and protects resources by developing on infill properties within the city. Lastly, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the related environmental assessment, recommending that a. Uh class thirty two categorical exemption be adopted and staff recommends the planning commission approve. Uh conditional use permit application number P twenty dash zero four eight eight, which requests to construct a multi-unit residential development. In the RS five zone district. That concludes my presentation and staff is available to answer any questions.
Hey, do any commissioners have questions for Philip? Hey, do we have a presentation from the applicant?
I believe either Eric or Cynthia Zamora would should be online. I'm not sure if they have a presentation.
Yeah, Cynthia has her hand up, so I'm gonna allow her to go ahead and talk. Cynthia, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Yes, can.
Okay, uh my name is Cynthia Zamora and I represent the owner of this project. Uh I'm here to answer any questions.
I I know that some of the um people were concerned about the fact that this would overlook their yards. And I wasn't able to tell from the drawings, uh but. What's the situation with windows of those duplexes overlooking either that one house to the south? Or the ones to the north or have you made arrangements so that's kind of blocked off? Because there's no windows on those sides or I don't know, I couldn't help in the design.
So um let me just um open the file. Okay. So you're, so on the south side, that one uh single unit, three um. There's actually no um window uh facing the neighbor on the south side.
Mm-hmm.
There is a window downstairs, but um.
Not upstairs.
Not upstairs. The window is facing west and east. Nothing on the south side.
Mm-hmm. And the north end of the property?
Um. On the north and the duplex, um it's the same thing, no windows on.
Okay, thank you.
On the second floor.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions for that?
Also, I would add um uh conditions uh require them to comply with uh. Uh design guidelines and transition standards. Um and so. Uh in reviewing, the compliance review after approval, staff would ensure that it does meet all those standards. And sometimes when buildings are within uh certain distance of uh properties planned or zoned for single-family. Or developed with existing single-family may require heights, window heights to maybe be elevated. So that way it would not, it would prevent any kind of direct uh sight down into adjacent properties.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone from the public in support of the project?
Yeah, I have, whoops, no, he put his hand down. Right now, there is no one with their hand up.
Hey, do we have anyone in opposition to the project?
There we go, I have Tyler. I'm gonna allow you to unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you guys uh for giving us the opportunity to come before you. My name is Tyler Mackey. And I'm a lifelong resident of Pine Dale, uh here up in Pine, we still call it Pine Dale, not Fresno. And um my family's been here since nineteen forty four. Uh we developed the lots from tents and uh. We've been on Beachwood, we've developed a church, we've spent thirty years serving in the school. And this is a project that's. When I hear you guys talking about the windows and where they're facing, it seems to miss the point that our community feels. It's the size, it's the height, it's the cost of rental. Um these units that are being built aren't being built for the people who live here. They're not being built at a rate that the people who have traditionally lived here can continue to live in them. What they're doing is they're adding to gentrification of our neighborhood, outpricing our families, reducing our property values, and invading our privacy. Um a two-story home was allowed to be built next to me. It is the first two-story home built in my neighborhood. And Kelsey and I have talked about this uh at seventy-two West Beachwood. We were never notified because it it was consistent with the plan. Philip and I discussed today, why we feel that this all has occurred is because of the two thousand seven merger of the Pine Dale specific plan. And the Bullard Plan. We don't feel that Pine Dale, it's one mile by one mile ra- area, is the same as Bullard in those homes in that area. We are a historic community that roots all the way back uh to the Dust Bowl Okies and uh the military base that brought so many of them here. And the Japanese uh internment camps that had been bulldozed and left with nothing but a statue. We were once a a thriving rural community and now we've been surrounded by an urban landscape. And the last piece of privacy that any of us had was our backyards, but as the buildings get taller, that starts to go away too. So now I have three windows looking into my backyard that my family for the last seventy years has enjoyed all of our holidays in. I also know that this home will never be owned by a homeowner. It will be rented as section eight for the rest of its existence. The owners don't even live in this town, care about this town. They're simply going around buying up properties, developing the largest thing that you'll allow under the plan. And then they force them. That doesn't allow us to build a community. When I was young, we had a thriving community of people who knew each other for generations. And today, those generations can't afford this new home. They can't afford the rent if it was rented privately, but because it won't be, they'll never have the opportunity. These apartments offer the same thing. And our objection as a community, I'm the one who submitted the forty-three. Not people, but households with multiple residents in each that are happy to sign a petition. If if we can, but with COVID, it's so hard for us to go door to door and feel safe, so we just called each other and activated our network. And and that email was generated last minute because I've been on vacation for two weeks at Shaver trying to stay away from people. And when I get home, you know, I have neighbors calling me saying, Tyler, please help. And I'm an activist and I'm and I'm a, and I work in the Tower District and I do a lot of work uh with the Tower District Marketing Committee as their executive director to promote that community. So I owe my community the same service. And I feel like what we, what's happening here is if we allow one two-story. And then two two-stories and then three. What ends up happening is we end up on that slippery slope where every empty lot in Pine Dale eventually develops a two-story house. Cause it's the most profitable pattern. It's the most profitable thing they can do is to build the largest, most people living per lot as they possibly can. But it'll never allow us to have a community because these people come and go every couple leases, right? And it never allows us to be a true thriving community, which we used to be. So with each step that we take towards this, it's a problem. My neighbors really don't think that we need more apartments. We think we need more small, single-family residents. And we've watched you guys approve small, single-family residences through the neighborhood in recent years, and we love them. They're very nice. They're single level, they're new homes, they're nice. Our member, our family members and our children, our grandchildren, they'll be able to afford them and live here alongside us. My family used to have four houses in a row and we all lived here, four generations. That's not gonna be possible in the future if we continue to develop these oversized, overbuilds. Apartments shut the door to homeownership. We could use more single-family homes and we'll take everyone you'll you'll allow built here. But apartments is difficult. And when we start to ease the 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 restrictions and say, well, two stories, fine, just don't put the windows facing your neighbors. Then we give credit and we start a precedent of more two-stories and more two-stories. And that's our concern as a community. I have neighbors, I have people that have never been, haven't been here in decades. I have people that just come to visit me. And when they come to my home, they look at the house next door and say, it doesn't belong here. What is it doing? It 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 dwarfs your community. It really, I mean, the community members stopped by and asked me, why did you build that? Cause they think my family still owns the land. And I say, well, we we don't own the land and a developer bought it and this is what happened. Try to sell to fellow neighbors, right? And this is what's beginning to happen in our community and our neighbors are very concerned. Many of them don't have access to internet. Um I had to go train one of my neighbors tonight. Hopefully Elaine got on this call. I had to train her how to get on. But I can't go to everyone's house one by one and help them get on Zoom. And they don't really, this is, this is so new for all of us. The meeting in November, um you know, unless you were within a thousand feet, you didn't get notified, I guess. So I didn't get notified until my neighbors notified me because I live too far. And um they just don't know how to organize and it's very hard. We used to have a community meeting once a month where we could discuss these uh upfront and then present a case to you guys before COVID. But since COVID, we haven't been able to attend our community meetings and there's no way for us to organize. Uh you know, opposition to anything like this that changes the face of our community. So what we're really just asking is that, please.
Tyler, can you wrap up your comment?
I would just, I would just advise you all to please read that email and understand the main points that we're we're dealing with. And why this leads to a downhill slide for those of us who have generationally put our hearts and lives into Pine Dale. And we like our community and we would just like to see it, it looks something like the way it is. And we believe that if we could reevaluate that Pine Dale community plan, maybe it needs to be updated so that we can preserve the historical neighborhood we have. But we just ask you to patience on this one and give us a moment or give.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Tyler. We appreciate it. Um does uh, does the applicant or the staff have any comment on uh Mr. On Tyler's comments?
Is Cynthia still on the line or Cynthia is a property owner on the line as well?
Uh actually, the property owner is on the line. Um. Uh, actually, the property owner is on the line. Um. I wanna see if she wanted to say something, um. This, this, this plan was well thought of and, um, if, I mean, two-story looks, looks big, but actually, these are eleven hundred square foot two-story homes. Um, and I always, and, um, there's also a new two-story, um, develop, I think that is a new residential two-story across us. And, um, it was built really, really, um, nice and, um, i- i- it looks, uh, better. And having this new, um, um, in my opinion, will, will not, will not, um, do anything harm to the neighbors, neighboring, um, houses. It will even, um, you know, uplift that there are new, um, houses in those infill areas.
So Tyler, it's, it sounds like he and his neighbors are concerned that this is section eight housing. Is it section eight housing?
Um, the, the third house to the, closer to that, um, FID, um, easement, that will be occupied by the owner. That was the intention.
Okay.
The applicant. Sorry to interrupt. With the application, there was no, uh, indication of any of the, you, proposed units, uh, be dedicated or, or reserved for affordable incomes, uh, and even if they were, uh, we wouldn't be able to deny a project based on that.
Right. I was just curious. Well, I'm, um, heartened by the fact that the owner is gonna live on the property. I think that says a lot. Um, okay, so let's take this back to the commissioners. Do you have any comments or questions?
Do I have a question?
Yes.
If I may ask, what the fair market value of the rent around the neighborhood is versus the, the cost to rent one of these units? Just the cost of how much they're gonna be renting for.
That's a question that the applicant or property owner would need to, uh, answer.
Cynthia, do you have that, eh, eh, an answer to that question?
Sure, um, I'm trying, I'm trying to, um, to figure out, um, budget for, for this also, and, um, I don't wanna say something, a number that the owner, I have, I have to concur with him really quick. Ca- ca- can you, um, let me, let me just, uh, can you hold on really quick, please?
Okay.
Perhaps if the owner would identify themselves by raising their hands, we could get the owner to speak directly with us. There we go.
Mr. and Mrs. Yanez.
Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, I just wanna say a couple of comments about the comments that were made from the community person. Um, I want you to know that I've owned this property for many, many, many years. Um, for maybe fifteen, twenty years. And over the years, I've taken care of that property. People have used it as a dump site where they dump their garbage. So I've been busy cleaning that property at least every other month over the last fifteen to twenty years. Community, the community in Pinedale deserves better. And that's why our plan was in retirement to make that property something nice for the community. And so, you know, i- i- it's not going to be, I mean, I'm not gonna say that I wouldn't rent to section A because, um, it depends on the, on the individual, the applicant that puts their application in. I have to look at the total person and see if they can handle the rent. Now, as far as the amount, you have to go for the fair market value. When you look at a three-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, two-bap home, here in Fresno, the rates go anywhere between twelve hundred and sixteen hundred. So based on whatever our costs are, and you know, right now, to build is extremely expensive. This last couple of years, we've gotten a really big hit in construction. So we really can't say, well, we're gonna rent it for thirteen hundred or fourteen hundred. It just depends on what our overhead is when this is all said and done. But we want to stay within the fair market value, whatever it is at that time. Any other questions?
Thank you. Um. I, I, uh, Kelsey pointed out that I don't think we act, I didn't close the public comment portion, but it, it, it looks like there's another person who wished to talk.
No, there's nobody else with their hands up.
Okay, so we are closing the public comment section and taking it back to commissioners.
Actually, now Javier Lopez put his hand up, so I don't know if, what you'd like to do.
Let's let Javier talk. Mr. Lopez.
You need to unmute yourself, Javier.
Mr. Lopez, um, you're still muted, so we can't hear you. So Gavin, I don't know what we can do about that.
There is absolutely nothing we can do about that. If they don't unmute themselves, I can't force it unmuted. I'm, I'm requesting that he unmute, so is all he has to do is, yes, but I'm not sure what's happening.
Did he press R six, maybe?
Not on a phone, he's on the app.
Okay, well, uh, maybe Mr. Lopez can, um, contact the staff after this, um, since we can't get him online. So we will go back to the commissioners now, close the public portion of the hearing. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I'm trying to chat.
Wait, Mr. Lopez is unmuted now. Can you try talking, Mr. Lopez? Must be having some audio issues. He's unmuted.
Okay, well. I'm afraid we will have to close the, the public portion now, so do we have any commissioners with questions or comments or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Yes, we have a motion to accept that. Uh, can we have a second, please?
I'm gonna second that.
So we have a motion by Ms. Commissioner Hardy, and, uh, a second by Commissioner Diaz. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Kelsey, we can't hear you.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Criner, I believe stepped off the call. Commissioner Sodi Lane? Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Vang, Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Bray.
Yes. Thank you, Philip, for your work on this. So now we'll go to item C, yeah, ID twenty dash zero zero one six zero nine, conditional u- conditional use permit number P twenty zero one six four three. Um, do we have a staff presentation?
We do. Good evening, commissioners. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna just share my screen in one moment. I apologize, I'm just trying to get this sharing.
There you go.
All right. Okay, good evening, commissioners. Uh, this is Thomas Avich with the Planning Department, and I'm here to present, uh, conditional use permit application, P twenty zero one six four three. And so this application, um, is for a, some duplex, um, units. Uh, twelve, it's for twelve duplex buildings consisting of twenty-three residential units at two zero five six South Maple. Um, and it's on a one point nine-two acre property. Um. Do, in, in the, the prop, the, the property is zoned, um, RS five, and based on the development code, um, a, a duplex or multi-residential use in a residential, single-family district, um, is subject to a conditional use permit. And further, they also have to, um, in this situation, the planning commission is the review authority. Um, this is a site map, a vicinity, vicinity map of the property. It's a two zero five six South Maple. Um, that's a little to, this is, this is a little, this is to the south of Butler Avenue, which is to the north of it up here. Um, this is, um, this is the planned land use and zoning for the property, and as I mentioned, it's RS five. And then to the south and to the west of this property, there's some, um, multi-unit existing, multi-unit properties. And then further south across the railroad tracks, there's some light industrial, and then to the east, it's a single-family homes in RS four. And then, um, per the development code, um, and the, this, the section of the single-family development code, um, it limits, um, duplex units to twelve units per, um, tw- twelve do- do- dwelling units per acre. And as this property is just a little over, little below two acres, um, the twenty-three total units proposed is, um, acceptable. Um, I have a overall site view real quick. Um, um, as you can see, there is a private street. Uh, this, it would have a private street for these units. Um, that would take, take it through to the individual, uh, buildings, and then would end at the rear of the property with a hammerhead turn for the trash enclosures. And so I just have a little close-up view, the front view. Um, and as you can see, these are, um, each, each building would have the two units, and then each unit has garages. Um, the first, the first unit to the south, um, isn't actually, actually, it's not a unit, it's gonna be the manager's office. And then this is, can this get the, the, the private street, that's twenty feet. It's got a twenty-foot width-wide private street that goes down towards the back of the property, and then the trash enclosures are off to the rear. And then, um, as, as you can also see, in between the, the, each, each unit has garages. Um, but, but then there is also guest parking in between the units. And here's a larger view of the floor plans showing, uh, two, two duplex, two individual units per building and the, uh, garages. Um, here's a quick, here's an elevation of the proposed buildings. And as you can see, they're, um, one-story, um, single-family designs, um, with a hip roof style. Um, the project, the project was reviewed by the District Five Project Review Committee, and they recommended approval of the project. Um, they did recommend that the, the, the private street would include, um, speed bumps within the develop, within it to enhance safety. And that has been, can, that, that recommendation has been carried over to the conditions of approval. Um, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting, um, two members of the public attended and inquired about the, the proposed costs to rent a unit. And also, they just wanted to know, uh, where the, where this project would be in relation to their own properties. Um, a neighborhood notice was mailed, um, one letter, uh, from a nearby resident was received in opposition. Um, they were concerned about new apartments being added to the neighborhood. Um, they were worried that it would, it could lower their property values or that could cause crime to increase in the area. Um, and then al- also, the, the notice of the planning commission meeting was mailed to property owners within a thousand feet on November twentieth. Um, the project, um, it's consistent with, there's, there's several, um, policies and goals of the general plan that this project would be, um, appropriate for, um, such, such as promoting development of vacant, undeveloped and vacant lots. Um, and it promotes, this promotes residential infill. Um, based, based on what was, what was proposed and also, um, the, the project being consistent with up the plant, with the general plan, um, staff recommends approval. Um, we recommend adoption of the environmental assessment, and then we also recommend approval of the conditional use permit, um, s- subject to the conditions, um, that were provided in my, the report. And, um, this is back to the slides, and I'm available for any questions, and I believe, um, the applicant is available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do any commissioners have, uh, questions of Thomas at this time? Okay, so we'll ask the applicant to make their presentation, please.
Can the applicant identify themselves by raising their hands, please? There we go. Got Joey Daggett.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Good evening, um, Mad Chair and Commissioners, uh, this is Joey Daggett. Um, I am with Gateway Engineering. I'm the civil engineer on the project, not an architect, but I will try and answer any of your questions to the best of my ability. Um, I wanted to thank Thomas for his presentation and getting us through, uh, fairly quickly, so thank you, Thomas. Any questions for, I can answer, I, I'll, I'll do my best.
I couldn't tell from the elevation, do those duplexes have any kind of little patio or yard?
Um, they do have yards, but I don't think they have a patio.
But there's little yards.
Yeah, there's a little yard, absolutely.
Okay. And then this is gonna be owned by one entity, all of them, okay?
Yeah, their mark, their market rate, um, market rate apartments, that was one of the questions, um, from the, uh, one person that showed up at our community meeting was whether they're gonna be low income or market rate. Um, once they saw the elevations and the facade on the front and the, you know, workmanship on the inside, they were happy. They weren't, weren't concerned at all anymore.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone else have questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone here in support of the project?
No one has their hands up. Commissioner Bray?
Okay, is there anyone in opposition to the project?
No one has their hands up for that either, Commissioner Bray.
I'm gonna give that about two seconds before we move on. So, looks like we don't have anyone in opposition at this time, so we'll close the hearing to the public and go back to the commissioners. Does any one of the commissioners have questions, comments, motion?
I'll move to approve staff recommendations.
Can we have a second?
A second.
Was that Commissioner Sodi Lane that seconded? So we have a motion by Commissioner Diaz to approve, seconded by Commissioner Sodi Lane. We take a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Kriner? Commissioner Sodi Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Vang? Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Bray.
Yes. Thank you, Thomas, for your work on this. So that passes unanimously. Do we have a report from the secretary tonight? Guess not. So, um, are there unscheduled communications? If you're a member of the public and would like to comment, please use the raise hand function on Zoom, or if you're calling in, dial star nine. You will have three minutes if I can remember to watch the time. So.
I see no hands up at this time.
Thank you, Gavin.
You're welcome.
Okay, so it is seven twenty-nine and the meeting is adjourned. Have a nice, uh, rest of the week. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Well, now Dan came back. There he is. Where'd you go, Dan? We missed you. It's too late now. I hope you had no reports, Dan. And you're muted. That's even better.
I want to be perfect.
Well, you missed, you missed your opportunity, Dan. Have a good night.
I had no, nothing to report, so we're good.